Welcome back, everyone. I'm going to call the Dover School Committee meeting of September 22 to order. I think before we get started, we have a lot of new faces around the table and I know we've all sort of had some meetings over the summer. We've got to meet everyone, but I want to officially welcome Bill and Hans to the table with us this evening. And lucky to see that they're both still here.
Happy to be here.
Their third meeting of the month, so I told them we'd be nice to them. Any community comments this evening? There being none, we'll move right on to reports. And this is one of our opening meetings where the PTO is here to update us on the opening and how things are going.
Yeah, I'll run through some main headings, try and keep it brief for you. In terms of community events, we had the back-to-school picnic, which went really well. We had a great attendance and for us, we were really pleased to start making contact with the DS Raiders. They came and sold some items. We wanted to try and make links with those more with the theme that we have this year, which is team. We also had Dover Days, which we raised approximately $6,000. It was another great turnout and again, the Dunk Town was another big hit. The next night out is a community event, which is Games Night, which is also a part fundraiser, but also just encouraging parents out, families out, and to play games, get away from the screens. The auction, just a quick update on that, it's progressing well. We have our first big sponsor, which is Needham Bank in Dover. They've sponsored us for $1,000 to have their name appear on the step and repeat board, which, as I didn't realize it was called this, this is the photo board as you walk into the Oscars or any big film premiere on the red carpet. That's where you stop for a photograph, so their name will appear on there, hopefully with some of the companies. We did want to make a note at this point that as enrollment for the school does go down slightly, we're expecting fundraising to follow the same pattern, so we're reflecting that within the auction. And also, already, we do have a smaller pool of volunteers, which has been reflected in the fact that we do have a couple of board positions still unfilled this year, which we're continuing to try and fill, but that has been seen as a slight issue or a little problem this summer. Also in the planning as another event is a family night at a DS Raiders game. We've started with the soccer and we're hoping to join them and help promote their game through the Chicaring School, encourage families to get out to see them play. Again, this comes under the team theme. Also with that, Janice Berry, our music teacher, has asked to be included in that and I'm in contact with her. She's asked that she would quite like to take the band along to play cheer songs. So that's what we're trying to have as a big family night there. So I'm in talks with one of the team captains' moms on the DS Raiders and I'm hoping to reach out and make contact with the other teams as well.
Was that soccer again, or is it?
That's soccer and I have some contact names as well for basketball, football, and lacrosse.
Great.
So I'm hoping to reach out to all of those as well. Curriculum enrichment, upcoming events, we've got Susie Klein, the author for grade three. Understanding Our Differences is starting across the board. Dig It, Rocks and Minerals for grade four. Jackie Davis, another author for grade five, and Brian Lyes, grade two. So we've got a lot of good stuff coming up there. Hospitality, we'll start with the first teacher's luncheon will start in November, which I know all the teachers look forward to. Preschool, which I know is something that we've been discussing with Laura and Deb quite a bit. We're going to meet with them on Friday to determine more properly the PTO's role in the preschool and how our involvement will be, what we can do to help and support it. We're also meeting up with Pine Hill president, 9th October, to look at ways that we can work together with them and support them so that if there's anything that we can do to help them and vice versa. That was started last year by Martha and Katie and we're going to continue it. And our next PTO meeting is on Friday, October 2nd, and that's our general meeting, which will be open to all parents.
And your theme this year, just remind us.
Team.
Thank you.
Excellent.
It was a great turn and thank you too for the took of Warham.
I was replaced by Coach Pete very happily, but it was great to see lots of people and lots and lots of new faces.
Yeah, we get a lot of great feedback, yes. Thank you. Perfect. Ms. Diallo, the principal's report.
Yes, I know you've all had a chance to take a look at that. I thought I would just highlight the new preschool and our science professional development. You approved a preschool for us this year and that is launched. We have 16 students. We hired a number of staff members over the summer to help out with that. Of course, we have a brand-new preschool curriculum. As you were saying, we are developing plans for a preschool playground outside, so we're moving along and I'm just very, very pleased to have that at our school. So I know that Terry's going to be, I think, speaking more to that, the preschool in general. But I don't know if you have any questions on that?
What hall is the classroom in?
It's down the K-1 wing on the left-hand side.
I was fortunate to be here during one of the drop-offs and it was cute watching them come off. There's a parent negotiation is taking place. They were great, so hopefully it's been well-received, but it was cute seeing the little ones running in and out of the school.
It's great to have them here. And we were fortunate that the classroom therein was actually designed as a preschool classroom with a little bathroom next to it, so that's good that we had the space for it.
And on the playground, just give us an idea, like where are you? I was sort of trying to read it.
We actually had it fenced off today, so it's on, if you're looking at it, it's on the left side of the walkway. Surrounding the existing smaller climbing structure, which will be the appropriate building. So we have the funding in hand, we're putting temporary measures in place, so it nicely designated this playground.
And then, sort of, do you have a budget that you're thinking? I'm just trying to figure out sort of how much you're trying to raise.
Right, we do have a budget that we've proposed. We started working with a playground expert, the same person who worked with Pine Hill on the years. Part of it is, you know, how much do we need to have? So we do have that figure. And then, you know, if we raise a little bit more, you know, we could have another structure there, but we also want to make sure that we have plenty of open space for the kids just to run and play.
So that playground is just for preschool? The K's, no one else would access that during their?
Right, and then we just wanted to make sure that the students had kind of protected space there where they can start understanding what it is to do recess and also to make sure that other kids are not just running through.
Are they outside by themselves or in conjunction with another class?
Well, there's some overlap with the other grades, which is another part of the reason, but it helps the staff members keep an eye on those little people.
Corral them, yeah. And Park and Rec, I know they did the fencing for you, so obviously they're on board because it's sort of their property to decide how that works and their maintenance and such.
And yeah, kudos to the talent services that we have and the relationship that we have with them. We reached out and they offered the support. We really appreciate that.
Can I ask two small questions? The Spanish still comes in in kindergarten and not pre-k, just etc. I just wanted to... And the last one was the, at the ninth high school when parents had charts going to the classroom, the bracelet activity devices was briefly talked about. Is it scored?
Scored, right, for third grade.
Could you talk a little bit just more about that, or is it too early and talk about that?
No, absolutely. Actually, it's going to be presented to parents through letters, I think in a week or so. And it was discussed at the grade three common planning time this week. So in essence, we have purchased through a grant these bracelets, which are like Fitbits that so many folks have now. And the reason we're doing it is because we want to promote fitness and a healthy mindset so the students will be able to track data through that in terms of the movement. We're going to have three iPads mounted throughout the school where they'll be able to, in essence, scan and have their data updated. And then we're working out what happens at the end of the year with the bracelets. Some schools give parents the opportunity to purchase them for further use. Currently, the program is not set up to easily reassign the bracelets to other students, but that may come by the end of the year. So do you want to say anything more about that?
It was a grant from the Mudge Foundation, so thank you to the Mudge Foundation for that. And the idea is to look at regulation wellness and our physical well-being and when it's a good time to be active and when it's a good time to not throughout the school day.
And there's no fear running around flapping your arms to turn this around. Although some staff members who were trying it out have been doing it.
I've been doing this.
And it was mentioned that, it all sounds fantastic, everybody does, it was mentioned that children will be able to message each other through their accounts. I just wanted to make sure that was, that was going to be, of course, it's going to be handled okay. It's not opening up a social media mind field.
It's a completely internal system that's monitored with the members that are overseeing. It's a good point, though. We have taken a look through that and there were actually some things we asked to have removed.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Any other questions?
The entire report or just this one? I was wondering about the mindfulness training. Is there any thought of doing that for the parents as well? Dr. Willard sounded great.
He was. I know it's the first time that we've worked together and he did a beautiful job with staff members. I know there's mindfulness training that's being considered for the all-district PD. And Dr. Willard, I don't know if you want to say anymore about what might be in the works for parents? I'm not aware of some of them.
Mostly at the region currently, there may be some activities and then maybe all-region, Chicaring, Pine Hill and the region challenge success, we might have to be spoke back, but it's all in sort of a planning stage. But we can take your suggestions.
It'd be nice to get a guarantee.
We've got footprints, but we'll take your suggestions.
Just so we could work at home, you know, reinforcing what you're doing here would be helpful.
Yes.
That's great.
Any other questions? You can ask. She's still new, so she's hesitant.
I know. Did you talk about the UOD piece? If you really don't know, I thought that would, the expansion of it?
The Understanding Our Differences, right, yes. In grade two, we used to have all of our Understanding Our Differences programming and it's about building awareness of the full range of differences, physical, learning, intellectual. And we decided it was important enough to spread it throughout the school and not just have it contained in grade two. So we really did dedicate the months of September and October to having that implemented on a classroom basis. And each grade level has a different theme, so in kindergarten, it's allergies, something that's easier for them to understand. The older grades, it's around the autism spectrum and intellectual differences. So I'm really happy that that was proposed as a change for this year.
Who's teaching those units? Is it the teachers or are they bringing in outside special?
It's parent-driven and there's a whole curriculum with kits that are provided, but we do have a parent who's overseeing that, so it's quite an involved and invested group of parents.
Any other questions for Laura? Thank you so much. Dr. Willard?
I just wanted to just highlight a little bit of the professional development and Mrs. Diallo's report too, that our elementary educators went to Museum of Science for a week-long look at increased science. And I want to thank Dr. Reinhman for her shepherding of the process across both Chicaring and Pine Hill to bring the new Massachusetts Next Generation Science standards to us in a way that supports the learners, the kids in the classroom, so that's a great way to do it. We're also on Twitter, so please follow us. You'll see the live feed on the DS website, but each week I'll ask for a specific tweet and then I'll tweet about the open house nights and whatever else. If you have ideas for what we should be tweeting out there, certainly send them along to me. And I think it's important to note the way we welcome our new educators. You'll see in Mr. McGolduff and Terry's report, all of the new personnel that we have and how we welcome them and how we provide a mentoring and deduction program led by Callie Eden, who it's a day-long affair where we're looking at how do we develop mentoring relationships? How do we become part of the Chicaring School? So it's a kudos to all those, to Callie for coordinating for us as a district. So any questions?
Terry, I'm going to jump to you. Do you have a quick one?
Certainly. So it's been a very busy summer in all of the buildings, running our extended school year programs for students who require that over the summer to maintain their skills. Dover had a wonderful, very successful summer five-week program with students offering services in English language arts, math, reading, to keep students on par, so they're ready to come back to school and they have all skill set to be ready to go. We have a number of new staff that we're welcoming. We're very fortunate when we hire educational assistants that we're often hiring certified teachers who may not have gotten the position. That's a double-edged sword because we always do know there's that opportunity that they will find their permanent position and we're happy for them. So we have a number of new staff coming in because of staff leaving to take positions. We had our new preschool educational assistants that came in this year and are, from what I can see when I go into the preschool classroom, having a very intense time with the students. It's hard not to. They're having a lot of fun in there. So we've welcomed a number of new staff here at Chicaring this year in the special education Wanted to update you just a little bit about the preschool. I can't say enough about how much the staff worked this summer to prepare for that first day with students between ordering all of the fixtures that you see in that preschool classroom to make sure all of the tables, the chairs, all of the materials were appropriate for the age group. They worked really hard. Staff met and gave their own time, educational assistants gave their own time to come in and meet with the teacher, carry a call and be prepared. And students had sort of a staggered start, so parents had an opportunity to come in with their children one day to see the classroom complete because when they had the opportunity to visit in the spring, the classroom was not set up. So this was their first opportunity to see everything in place. And then they had the students start in two sections for half-days. So they split, the students gave them a chance to become familiar with the staff and then all of the preschool came together for the first day together. We currently have between 12 and 14 students attending the AM session. I do think there have been additions to that. Nora mentioned the number of 16 earlier. I think there have been some additions. I think we are at our maximum for mornings. And in the afternoons, currently, they have between, I think it's eight and 10 now, students attending the afternoon sessions. So parents have the opportunity to choose Monday through Friday mornings and they have the opportunity to choose, if they're four-years-old or older, to choose afternoons as well. So they have a very full classroom there, but have lots of support in that classroom. Just a quick update, I think that next month we'll do further update as to the financial pieces incomplete of the preschool. But in December of 2014, you know, when we were looking at projections, we projected approximately $20,000 in tuition revenues. As of right now, we have parents committed to, it's about $23,300 in tuition revenues. So we're very close to what that original estimate was for the year. I visited preschool a few times. It's a great place to be. When I worked at Pine Hill, it was always the place I went to when I needed to have a smile or fun. So they're often running and have hit the ground running. They're doing a great job. As of, an update for the team chair for Chicaring, as of Friday of last week, we have offered the position to a candidate. We are hoping to hear back from her soon as to a decision. And we have our fingers crossed, she has a wonderful background, lots of years of experience and beyond that, I think a demeanor and personality that would be a fabulous fit in addition to the Chicaring staff. So we are very, very hopeful and we'll update as soon as we know more.
I think to that point, one of the questions I had was if she doesn't, or if this candidate doesn't take the job, what are your options?
So we've talked about a few options. If it were that we were in a situation where the very short term that we had to fill in, Amy Curry, who is the team chair that's been hired at Pine Hill, has kindly offered to help chair some of the meetings here. In her previous position, she worked between two schools. She's offered to do that. I would have to pick up some of, you know, parent phone calls, interactions, some emails, things like that, that would be if it were short-term. If it were long-term, I mean, we're going to open the search back up and move forward with that. Bill and I have reached out to colleagues who, you know, are recently retired to see if they're interested in some interim work, so we will find someone to fill that.
And if she does take the position, how soon could she start?
We're not exactly clear on that, if she were to take the position. And there was a short-term period between when Marla's done, which is next week, and when this person can start. Certainly, Amy Curry from Pine Hill could help pitch in for chairing meetings and I can help pitch in with parent communication, things like that, for short-term.
And as we're in a, like, phase two of this reorganization, as we said before, I think when we talked to all of us at the joint meeting, please let us know if you need extra support or, you know, speak up because I think we want this to be successful. And I'm sure we don't know all the pieces that need to be part of the puzzle at this point, so that we are here to help support it and make it work, so.
So over the next week or so, I will be meeting with the administrative assistants at both of the elementary schools to put some new procedures in place on how we're going to handle some things. We may come back and have that discussion.
Okay. And while I'm thinking about it too, I know last year when we talked about the revenues and this is pricey for Hans to write down, we thought we were low on the rates, so we thought we'd definitely look at an increase for a year or two. And we had some data that we had acquired from other nursery schools, but before we get involved in that budget process and we sort of set ourselves already up, and I know preschools do registration on the earlier side, how I should think about those rates sooner or later.
Parents are already contacting the schools about getting on the list for the preschool lottery. And so we do need to probably discuss that.
We're returning students to get priority?
Yes.
Sort of the enrollment from?
Correct. We don't ever ask current students to become part of the lottery.
Right.
So once parents, they're here, parents know that they are here to stay.
Have you received any feedback from the parents, whether it's been solicited or unsolicited to date? I know it's early, obviously.
I have not. I don't know what conversation Marla may have had with some of the parents in the last week or so, and I don't know if Laura has heard specifically from parents of preschool students.
It's been very positive and we had preschool be a part of the open house and so I think a lot of, you know, curriculum questions were answered then. It was a nice opportunity for this call to connect with the parents. And, you know, with any new program, we're figuring some of those little pieces out, but it's been very positive and I'm really, really glad that we have it in the school.
Can I ask, can you remind me what the hours are? Are they, do they start and end at the same time as K through 5 or is it staggered, starting in?
They start later and they end earlier, so they start at, did they come in at 8:45? 8:45, they start at 9, and then they leave at 2:15. Students are here for the half-day, the evening.
And as far as administrative assistants, I don't, can you remind me of what staff is in place in which building and whether or not they may be shared resources?
So currently, Chicaring has an administrative assistant in the special education office that works three days a week.
Okay. And how about Pine Hill?
Pine Hill has a full-time person.
And will that be something that's revisited for the budget for the next year's? Not, only because it was a position that we shared between two buildings and now we're going really to a one-to-one position for each building and I'm just questioning what might happen if we need assistance, so that's something that would probably be revisited during the budget season.
Okay. And with the addition of the preschool, there's a whole new set of paperwork that I think needs to be taken out, yes, too.
And one other question, in terms of physical assets that may have been needed to, in the preschool classroom, were you able to use what may have been a kindergarten table and chair, or is that new physical assets in that classroom?
It's really been a mix. There are a number of bookcases that we were able to reallocate, but then things like the tables and chairs, we had orders that they be the appropriate size.
Okay. And was that provided for in the budget or is that?
It was.
Okay. I just remember.
We had $12,000.
I didn't remember that, yes. Thank you.
Any other questions for Terry this evening?
I have one, I'd be curious. I don't know if this is the perfect place to ask the question, but in terms of the playground, and I know you're in the planning term phases of how to fund what is needed and what, and the need to have and would be nice to have, but I just wanted to throw out there to add to the discussion is that could you use the special, the gift fund? There's been some special ed-directed gifts and I don't know if there's any of that that hasn't been specifically spent yet that may be available. And the second is, you know, we've got that, the building fund when we have outside users renting, if you will, facilities and that's a number that keeps building. So, you know, I'm just trying to think of other resources out there beyond the PTO, which is really serving pre-K through 5. And this is a very specific need for a smaller population, so I just thought we might want to open the discussion on some of those other funds, funding sources.
Great. Terry, thank you so much. I know you've had a busy summer, the year that never ends, so we appreciate all your effort that you put into all this, so thank you. Hey, Bill?
Good evening, everyone. It's nice to be here. I just want to speak to a couple of items that were in my report and to highlight some. The first is, although it's, we're three weeks removed from the opening of school, I still think it's important to celebrate the fact that the opening this year was very successful and I do want to thank and commend some people. We sometimes forget how we get to that day. You know, we get to that day and everything goes smoothly and it's a wonderful day, all the kids are back, but it doesn't happen by magic, that's for sure. Our staff, our staff did a great job and I will tell you that although our teaching staff and support staff are just returning, you know, our teaching staff spend a lot of time during the summer. They're not in the building, but they spend a lot of time preparing, thinking about the year ahead so that when they arrive for the first day of school for students, they're ready to go. And so my appreciation, thanks and commendations to the Chicaring staff for a great opening. Specifically, I'd like to recognize Ms. Diallo and Dr. Reinhman again. It just doesn't happen and for all their hard work, excellent planning over the course of the summer, paying attention to the details to make sure that things go smoothly, excellent job. And to our Ministry of Assistance who supported them through the summer, really a job well done. And then last, I do want to recognize and thank Steve Almarado and his staff. You know, the summer, the summer, it seems like nine, 10, maybe 11 weeks, depending on how you look at it, is plenty of time to get the building ready, especially when the kids and staff are gone. But not only do they do all of the work they do over the summer, there are all kinds of special projects that they're engaged in and need to work on. So that staff did a fabulous job and this building just looks spectacular when staff and students return. So congratulations and thanks to them and all of our staff. Well done. In terms of personnel, information was supplied to you. There are a number of new staff members, both professional support staff at Chicaring this year. And again, that's another process which is time-intensive that our staff takes very seriously. All of our new staff, new professional staff, we're engaged in a new staff force. All of our new staff, new professional staff, were engaged in a new staff orientation. Dr. Leduke mentioned that earlier. And they were well-engaged, and I think that was very successful as well. And we want to welcome all of our new staff to this school year. Then the last thing, well, three more things really. Just want to briefly talk about enrollment, some good news with enrollment. Over the last number of years, with one exception a few years ago, enrollment has been declining. The projection for this year was that enrollment would be down by thirty-nine students. In fact, the enrollment is down by just fifteen students. So there were twenty-four additional students that enrolled above what was projected. And those numbers were, if you look at it, were pretty well spread out throughout the grades. So I think that's good news, and there'll be a much more comprehensive report at our next meeting where we'll look at the official October one enrollment, and hopefully we'll look at some trends. And we'll have a first pass at some projections for next year. So I look forward to.
Just on that, though, that means that we had over thirty, more than thirty-five new students. That's just, that's more than I expected when I heard that enrollment was up. That is a lot of new students, which is probably even more because how many, you know, I'm sure you'll tell us on that too, but how many exited, which means that number is even higher.
Yeah, we did have two.
Oh, just two? We got great.
Yeah, it's about the same number. Last year's new students, around thirty new students last year.
No, we, no, last year was the year that, I don't think we had it, two years ago we had like thirty-one. Last year we were, we were below what we had budgeted.
For new students coming in though?
Yeah, for new students, yeah. So this is back up, this is higher than it was that one year we thought we'd already broken all the records.
Thank all your work.
This is a Boston Magazine effect.
At what point do you know those numbers of the twenty-four new students? Is it, is it by May? Did all this come in over the summer? I mean, is there?
Our comparison data was from June. So since June, all this has changed. I mean, we expect a lot of change over the summer. We do that every year. But it did not follow the projections. I mean, there are two new housing developments in the community. We had four people walk in, it did before teachers started to register new students. So, and it continues. So we have some coming after the school year starts. It's a very hard.
We don't want to ruin that. That was another discussion.
Another building project?
Not quite, we could reopen some of the rooms.
Can I just open up the conversation? It's a future effort, but Bill, in the area of forecasting enrollment, do you have some insight in what you've done in other districts as far as looking at different input sources that would help us?
Yeah, sure.
Forecasting the incoming kindergarten, and I realize that, you know, new students, you know, one through five is more random. But understanding, you know, kind of population trends, what's happening in our town, and what you've done in other districts would be helpful, I think, to us.
Yeah. I have an interest in enrollment for that, that I've just had for many, many years. So I've done a lot of work in the districts where I've been and have put together a protocol for forecasting enrollments. And one of the things I'm really interested in seeing is the in-migration, out-migration numbers and the actual statistics on the number of students who may have left between the end of June and have arrived. What the numbers right now suggest without the detailed information is that the process that's been used for forecasting the next year's enrollment is to move the kindergarten through grade four students, the same number forward as if they would be here, and then adding in-migration, out-migration number, which this year happened for Chicaring happened to be eleven. So Don's number thirty-five was really a combination of the twenty-four students above the projected level plus the eleven that you projected would be in that in-migration, out-migration pool, so to speak. So it, I'm interested in seeing exactly how many of the students actually are the same students that we had in grade one that are now in grade two. And we can go through this in a lot more detail at the next meeting. But, you know, I have, I have a couple of different ways of presenting the material that look a little different from the spreadsheet that you've been using in the past. And the protocol that I use is I actually make a projection from grade level to grade level using historical data. And it's basically using the survival, the cohort survival rate methodology, which I found for, especially for grades one through twelve in the districts where I've been, to be really pretty accurate. The big, the big question mark is always kindergarten students. I do know that you use the census data for that, I think, as opposed to the live birth data that we can access. I like the fact that the census, you use the census data because it's the most up-to-date data you have. But the assumption is that all the families that are currently in town are actually filling out the census data. And we know that that's not typically correct. There's certainly a percentage. So I've actually used a formula where, from year to year, I look at the census data for zero to five-year-olds and then make a projection on if there's X number of one-year-olds, what the data the next year might be projected for two-year-olds. And just have followed that and use that to project what kindergarten numbers might be. And then we, you know, that's starting October, but then we verify the K projections. I have done it usually as of February first, get that latest census data and then do a comparison. But I will tell you in my experience over the years that I've done it, there's usually the K numbers, there's a wider discrepancy between what the actual number ends up being in September and what's projected. I have a goal, and my projection is that for the grade one through twelve, projection numbers, anything within a three percent variance is usually, is what I shoot for. So I'm looking forward to kind of talking more with you about that and getting into the details. And then the last thing about the enrollment, I did want to point out that all of the sections of grades K through five are within the class-side guidelines, the class-side policy has. And then two quick things, well, one quick thing. I know that back in the spring, there was conversation related to the school start-time initiative study that was done. And when that had come to a conclusion, there were some suggestions that the district worked with the bus company to see if pickup times could be adjusted so that students were not arriving earlier than they needed to and might have some, by adjusting those times, we have some additional time in the morning at home before they get to the bus stop. So at this point in time, it looks like two of the ten routes were adjusted, and they were adjusted by about five minutes. But as we've gone through the last three weeks, we're continuing to monitor that. It appears that there are some other buses that are arriving early. I know Dr. Reingerman is paying close attention to that, and we'll be working with the bus company to see if we can adjust those start times as well. Just for information, at the regional level, four of the routes were changed. Three of them were routes stocking in Dover. And I know that the staff at the middle high school are watching that as well, and we'll continue to work with Connolly to make adjustments where we can.
Question on buses. Do we have eight or nine buses? Is it nine buses at Chicaring?
Ten, ten was one that goes into Boston. So eleven total.
Okay, so, but ten in Dover?
Yes.
And the original contract that was renegotiated had nine? Offline, can, I just wanted to understand how they came up with the valuation of that extra bus because of the way they apportioned the bus rates between the region and the two elementary schools when the elementary schools reduced their buses from full capacity, if you will. So I'd be interested in understanding how they were charging for that extra bus and what effect it may have had on the region.
So the region's basically paying for the majority of the bus, the way the contract?
Exactly.
And they nicely, they are giving us a really good deal to add it back into our budget.
But it's, hopefully it's been reducing what the region is absorbing? No?
No, because we were, we were, the region still needed the nineteen buses, and so the cost, that was big.
But it's less than two thousand dollars.
Oh, it is?
Yes.
You might have missed. Okay, sorry.
So there's a report that was, that was shared in July, we'll make sure you get that.
Because it actually helps the bus company also because of the half route that they were running, keep their drivers in a full route occupied. It was like a win-win on both sides. We were all kind of surprised by the cost, but it's minimal.
Okay.
Thank you. Any additional questions for Bill?
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, well, moving on to closing out last year. So Hans will turn it over to you for our fiscal year fifteen sort of financial roundup.
Thank you. Let me just begin by saying, what I presented in your packet, what you have is basically what you presented last year. This is my first time with this rodeo, done the other two already. So if there's any changes that you want, anything else, just let me know, either tonight or email me. But again, the information that we're providing is basically what you got last year. So with that, we'll do the numbers. Basically, you closed out the year on target, you weren't over budget. The in-district operating surplus obviously was mainly due into the legal service for food, a school committee account. Staffing changes after the budget was finalized, contract negotiations was the big driver. Transportation utilities and also came in under budget significantly, as did the teacher sped account. Again, the explanation being attracted some of the sped contractual services and therapist category to the grant. District information management tech was over budget, but my understanding is you all understand that that was the projected purchase that was.
Replacement.
Exactly. It was charged to the appropriation budget. Much like the out-of-district level, out-of-district sped budget level, those costs were higher than anticipated to the tune of almost a hundred eighty-seven thousand dollars, which is obviously offset by the one ninety-two surplus you have in the regular in-district operating. So the bottom line is surplus of four thousand nine hundred ninety-two dollars. Circuit Breaker, for those of you that like that kind of information, was funded at seventy-three and a half percent over the forty-one, four oh eight per student number. Dover, town Dover will receive six hundred eighty-two thousand dollars in Circuit Breaker funds, those are all obviously going to go to Dover, which is good news too, as we never tap into that, into that category. The breakdown of elementary versus secondary sped expenses, basically one million, thirty-six percent of it was attributable to the elementary level, one point nine, almost two million of it, sixty-four percent was at the secondary level.
So that's Dover's contribution to the secondary level?
Yeah. Okay. We got the whole thing, whole shebang. Basically, twenty students at the secondary level, eleven, and this is the last report that we had back in June at the K through five, and then nine at the preschool level. Just break out on those numbers. Okay. The other pieces are simply the status of certain funds that, I guess, the food service account was running in the negative. My understanding is the main driver, two of the main drivers was forty-two hundred dollars from the point of sale software. But also, and I'm not sure this is fifty-eight oh eight, this was written by my predecessor, declining enrollment, I guess, you know, we have to take a peek, I want to start taking a look at what is the participation rate, why, how can we get that up? It's difficult at the elementary level, everywhere I've been, to cover your costs at the food service level, especially when you're trying to do the farm-to-tables, all those kind of wellness initiatives, they start to get a little expensive. Business managers like me tend to freak out right away on that kind of stuff. So there's a balance there between what can we do, what can't we do, and how you want to run, how negative do you want to run, how negative don't want to run, okay? And again, I think there'll be a better breakout of this as I get into it more. The building use and the gift accounts shows the balances there. I like your idea of potentially tapping those. I just got to take a look at, in particular, the gift accounts, whether or not those gifts were targeted towards certain things and cannot be used for something or something else. If not, shouldn't be any reason why you can, and you've got a rather healthy balance there in the building use, which we could use for the playground, if we saw that.
When you dive into the food service revolving account, I just looked at last year's year snapshot to look at the drivers and the changes between that exhibit a year ago and the exhibit today. And a couple of things I noticed that I wondered if, on the intake, which I guess is the family contributions, last year, which the line this year says local and federal receipts, so it's combined together?
Right, yes, what they've had.
Last year, the line was separated, and there was the local family contributions, and there was something called a federal reimbursement.
Yep.
And the total of that together was fifteen thousand more than this year. So I suspect that the family contributions are way down and, or perhaps, I might look at this.
It could be either one.
Yeah, so if you could.
I'll break that out.
Please, so I can see the difference.
Makes perfect sense.
I get, I know what happened in salaries, there's a delta there. But what I was surprised by was the delta in what's presented as the food costs, because last year it was presented as sixty-one thousand, and this year it's around fifty, and I would not have expected food costs to go down by twenty percent.
Yep.
So I wondered if we could get an explanation for that. And lastly, the other category last year was very, very small. And I presume that the POS system went through there, but something else must have gone through there. And I'm curious what that is. And then lastly, I always ask, is the delta in the prepaid account as last year versus this year to understand the true, if you will, cash basis of intake to outtake?
And I'll just make a point. I know from looking at Warren's that we still have another chunk of the POS that's going to hit in this fiscal year. So it all did, the way, this is sort of the cash basis, it all didn't get paid in fiscal year fifteen.
Yeah, but I thought our contribution was not more than four.
No, oh, no, we approved ten thousand dollars.
Oh, we did?
Yeah. So we'll see another little chunk and it fits in fiscal year sixteen.
The building design, is that for this committee to decide how we use it?
It is.
So I just, I'm just, with hearing from PTO, there's a little bit of pressure on their fundraising efforts this year, and we have an exceptional, we have an exceptional use with the.
Right.
Playground for the younger children.
So in the past, on my tenure on school committee, we've used it for some security enhancements, some stuff that we did last, we wanted to do immediately and sort of not have to filter it through capital. And then you remember, we used part of it to supplement the paving project, where we drew from a couple of different sources. So that is our side, how to use. We try to stick it to something that is involving the building because it's rental revenues. So, you know, upkeep of the building is sort of the use that makes sense.
So.
So the playground, I mean, that would suffice, but that's sort of, we try to keep it at least in line with what the revenues are coming for that.
So the playground would fall in line with that?
Yeah.
Should we discuss that now?
No, I think we need to wait till we have a proposal. Because I don't, you know, we don't know what dollars we're talking about and that kind of stuff. So I think we know there's funding sources, I think we need to plan and propose before we start talking.
I just didn't want to make it seem like we were, it was all implied that we were working through that.
Also, if there's a timing as well, right? Because as we fall ends and you get into winter, is there something that needs to be done this year? Or is it just based on the timing to get a quote and figure out the finances, are we all of a sudden going to have snow on the ground? I don't know when the project will begin, but.
Currently, we're not expecting it to begin until the spring.
Okay.
But that is based on revenue.
Do we know how long it would take?
Some work this fall and some in the spring, depending on how funding is made. So there's a retrofitting, a new surface to go in, and a clear structure.
Do you have a ballpark? Do you have a ballpark expectation of the cost?
It would be premature to say that now, except I'm way off.
I can tell you that we're concurrently building a new preschool playground over in Pine Hill. So, you know, I can, the timing, it's going well, actually.
How much does that cost?
How much does it cost?
Oh, $75,000?
Yeah.
But it's also larger than I think what you're envisioning out there. And it's for scratch.
So I'm like, my slow brain, if, if the timing's being driven by funding, that's how the funding comes in. But if suddenly, if you had a large chunk of funding that would come from the building use fund, that's got $42,937 in now, would that help? That would get, because we get about playground quicker.
Good question. Where did we budget the POS system? Do you recall? What, is it a?
We, no, we budgeted to be paid out of the revolving fund.
We did?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So was it, it was budget neutral? The 10?
Well, I...
If it was budget, I mean, if it was part of the deficit, then it wasn't budget neutral.
That's what...
No, 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 we don't budget, we don't budget revolving funds. I mean, we don't budget, oh, that's what you're saying. Yes, we knew, we knew that.
I mean, basically, yeah.
But I'm wondering where in the geography of, where did we think it was going to hit on the operating side?
We weren't sure because we didn't know, we knew we were going to pay it through the revolving fund, and we were going to see how much surplus revolving fund had to cover it. And then we knew we would be eating the deficit.
Okay.
No pun intended.
Right. Exactly. And so we knew we had funds in there to, in our total budget, that would cover it. So we placed it into our school committee because we had money left over in our school committee.
Because it's in the account that has surplus, because you're not allowed surplus from the deficit.
I think when we approved the 10,000, we knew that's what it was going to cost. We weren't quite sure what the school revolving lunch deficit was going to be. But we knew it wasn't going to be any more, on a normal operation, normal course of operation, like last year, we brought in 6,700, I think, of a deficit. So we're sort of, unfortunately, used to doing that.
Along the same lines, I look at the revenue gift account, the revolving account, and I, oh, that's an expenditure.
Yes.
Okay. So we took in here, I remember, from the PTO, and this is the expenditure hitting.
Well, the whole project was 20.
Right.
We took 10 from, right. We took 10 from our operating, five from them, and five from the PTO.
Okay. So the opening balance of 24 was, the PTO had, must have put money in the year before at the end of the year. And here it is hitting as the outgoing expense. Am I looking, reading that right?
No, that we, that's our 5,000 that we, I think the PTO paid the, I forget how that 5,000.
Which one do you want?
I'm on the gift.
Revenue's gifts, right? So the balance forward, the 24308, give the balance forward, and then the 500 coming in.
You're right, the 24 already included the 5.
That's what I think happened. Okay. I just wanted to verify. So this isn't hitting on when we paid the bill?
But when we paid, exactly. When we paid the bill, the bill came out of the operating.
Yep. And we reimburse ourselves here for the PTO contribution that's sitting up in the opening balance.
No, I think we're, could we use, we used 5,000 of our own gift money.
Right. Okay, I'm with you. It makes sense.
Thank you. There's two 5,000, one from the PTO, one from the gift fund. That's the gift fund leaving.
Right. What she's asking is, you know, you took in 500, which takes you up to 248, and then you're taking out 5,000, which takes you down to 19808. So...
Oh, no, she's disregarding the 500.
No, I mean, more than the 500, but the gift from the, the original gift from the PTO that we voted to accept is in that opening 24308. Then we did the project, and we're charging of the 20,000, whatever the project cost was, five of it is being charged properly to the gift account to offset the contribution that was made to pay for it.
That's how I read it. When you read that, doesn't sound correct. Okay, so we'll have to check.
Off-line.
Because it really is 10,000 coming out of that. I think it's a matter of the timing of how it's recorded here. 5,000 went in, the PTO money, we paid that 5,000 out, plus our own 5,000, I guess is what I'm trying to say.
Okay.
It's possible the other 5,000 will pay out after June 30th, so it's not reflected.
Right. That one was, yeah. And I don't remember how the whole transaction transpired. Okay. Any other questions about fiscal year 15 or the revolving fund balances? So the revolving fund balances, as we have before, we see a June 30th report, and then we'll see one December 31st. So sort of we do it twice. I'm sure we got anything? As we turn to, I know we never spend too long, and the current year we are, because I'm going to start talking about fiscal year 17 now, but on the budget and planning calendar, you've seen this, I think in some of the joint meeting packets. But just to sort of run through some key dates for Dover, when we convene in October, that will be the members' opportunity to share any thoughts about the budget with administration. So as you're thinking over the next month, think of any directives or things that you would like to change in the budget or add to the budget, because it's our opportunity to give to administration before they start building the budget. Because after the budget is built, it's sometimes a little too late to take in those initiatives. So that's with October 27th, we'll have time to do that. Other than that, our schedule is following the same timeline, and you have all the important dates. The dates that are bolded are the ones where we're going someplace else to present our numbers. So those are the extra meetings. Other than that, there are other meetings that are already on your calendar for school committee meetings. Any questions on that? We will, Bill, Hans, and myself will be joining Warren on the evening of October 14th to do a wrap-up of fiscal year 15, anything we know about 16, and lay any new groundwork that we know for 17. Like last year, we went, we told him at that point, we thought we were going to do a preschool program so we could sort of start laying the groundwork for any new programs that we may have. And that sort of leads us nicely into capital, because if you notice on our calendar, capital needs pretty quickly and pretty early in the season. So we do have some items tonight we need to talk to, talk about regarding capital. At our next meeting in October, we actually will be approving capital numbers. So it's sort of a fast process, but we find that it works pretty well for us and the town. And fortunately, this year, we don't have a whole lot to talk about on the, on the capital side. So I will turn it back over to Hans to walk through the items that are packed on capital.
Here's three exhibits that I added here, and just for my own sanity, I went back in time and used the approved Dover form. The first one, Exhibit F, is basically the annual, the capital articles, not the technology ones, but all of the other capital articles that are approved at town meeting, and what their status was to date. As you can see, basically, they're all complete, and the articles can be closed. And again, that's my next thing is to talk with Dover, how do I close these articles out with the town accountants to make them basically go away? And any questions on that one? I don't think so. I think it's fairly straightforward. There were small things that you purchased this year, the biggest one being the security enhancements, the camera systems, I think is the one, the biggest one, $1,000 expense. Second one, Exhibit G.
I'm sorry, Hans, I have a quick question, and I apologize if it's written somewhere and I've overlooked it, but the EMS major upgrade that was canceled, can you just remind me why it was canceled?
Yeah, I can do that for you. So that is when we, the part of that was to upgrade the software. And when we talked, we started talking with the manufacturer or the company last year with Ralph, we decided to cancel that because we really don't need an upgrade at this point. And our next step would be to get a district-wide system, and so we're waiting for the other campuses to be ready to take that step. So...
It's on the radar screen in all three. So the question is, do you go and get one, big one, or are they all so different that it would cost us a portion to do that, so you stay within what you have right now?
Thank you. Good memory.
Exhibit G, I thought I just updated the technology capital articles that were approved at town meeting. And again, I'm sorry, there's a couple of mistakes here, the bottom limestone foot properly, I can send you out an updated one that didn't carry across the bottom. But the only one I want to point out is the 2014, the teacher laptops, where it says 27 teacher laptops, that was actually 25. And that's actually still in process as we, as we speak. And then finally, the other one, Exhibit H, is going, we'll talk about it in a moment, that's the 2017 projected projects, as happened in the onsite inside report that you did. And again, we'll have some discussions around those. I've met with Ralph and with Don and the capital committee. Basically, you've got three projects on the docket for 2017, two of which we think we can defer, because basically they've already been done. So the question then becomes, do we want to move something else in the, in the calendar forward in 17 to take those spots?
So, yeah, if we even work for it, the cold water booster system Ralph basically rebuilt.
He's rebuilt them over the last couple of years, unfortunately. We had to, we had no choice. So they're basically in good, in good stead for the next five years.
I think the one, Ralph had one item that he suggested we bring for the craft.
Yeah, Ralph is really big on, in 2020, when you see the aerial lift, aerial man lift right now, we don't have one here, they have to move it over from the, from the high school, middle school, every time they want to use it, and they've been using it extensively from what I understand.
Is that for like light replacement in the gym or?
Anything that you have to go up, hide, and yes, that would be something you have to do, but you could do it.
So we cart that thing back and forth?
Yes, we do.
I've been upping it once, because when we did the no bake bake sale here, the very first year, we had a big birthday cake up there, and we had it brought over so that we could go up. So now I realize, but I think we would, to make sure we probably don't say replacement, but that's an addition. That's what I'm thinking about.
Yep.
I didn't realize we didn't have one.
Which we recommended, we get one for this campus here.
Yeah. And I think, you know, your next column is still left to see what's in 2018, so I think Ralph and Hans are looking at the two cafeteria projects to see if that's something, where those stand. I think that, as I mentioned in the email to you guys yesterday, one thing we do need to leave this evening is, at least with a number that's a placeholder, that we can send to capital tomorrow, because their deadline is October 9th. Because of all the change and transitions they have, allowed us to not send our final package until after our October 27th meeting. Then if we give them a placeholder that they can start putting into their spreadsheet. So we do need to sort of come up with a ballpark number on the capital, which at this point looks like it's...
First handful of years.
So you're saying, first, these three listed, we can put to zero?
No, the air conditioning.
No, I'm sorry. Yeah. The 9,800 would stay, the 14,752, the cold water boiler, and then the elevator upgrades, we talked with the elevator maintenance vendor, again, said there was really no reason to do anything. So those two, and the only one that really needs to be done is the 9,800.
And I know capital always gives us sort of guidance to try to spread our expense, but I think we're getting a little timeframe right here where we don't necessarily, we're in such great shape in the building that there's not a whole lot, even on the onsite inside report, that needs to be done in this sort of window of time. So I think that's where, rather than trying to make it all even, if there's nothing we really need to request, you know, we don't have to go looking at it.
Two people we have not spoken to, obviously the principal and the assistant principal, any touch base with them? If there's any issues there, we need to speak.
Right.
See you after the meeting, okay?
So if we, you give them a placeholder, say like 25,000, do you want to do more?
What would that cover?
Well, that would cover the two items that we, the aerial lift and the air conditioning upgrade, which we know we need to do.
Air conditioning.
I mean, if we want to add 25 to that.
I apologize, I'm reading the wrong line. Gotcha.
Yep.
Is there any logic in just parking this figure until we talk about temperatures?
Yeah. I don't think that temperature necessarily that project would be in this year's capital, to be honest. We don't have a good, I don't think that's something that's going to be, we can steamroll through next year to next year's annual town meeting.
What if we were talking about replacing windows or, I mean, other things that we...
We could, but I mean, I don't know how much more information we're going to have to really have a good package by the end of October.
Can it be a separate line item? Can it be, would that be, I don't remember how the middle school did it. Was it part of their capital number in the region, or was that a separate?
Well, no, the region is different, because it's the region, so that's a separate warrant that they will go forth for their act.
So again, could we do a separate warrant if we were so inclined? Is that off, is that not possible?
Is that, we would go to town meeting to look for? Well, all of this stuff goes to town meeting. It's just... So if this is a juncture where we don't have other things to stand on, why would we, and we have potential, I mean, why would we not? Because I think, well, this is my, we don't really have a good plan at this juncture, and I think it's going to be, regardless of what we do, a fairly expensive plan. So we need to have it well thought out before you run off and ask for anywhere from half a million to a million dollars. I mean, it took the middle school three years, because you have to build, you know, we built the case a little bit, but I think we have more work to do, and we really don't even have an idea of where we want to go.
Is there a harm of putting it in and then not using it next year?
Well, you can't put something in that you don't have a plan backup for. I mean, when it goes to a town meeting, it is like, here's the plan, here's the deal.
Here's all the quotes.
This is the quote, the contractor, you know, it's not just, I mean, think about entertaining.
And that all has to be done before the end of October, not before town meeting?
The backup. You have a little lead weight, but not a whole lot, because capital pretty much wraps up their capital by the end of December.
End of December.
Because they have to then go on and do the other pieces of the budget.
And the warrant closes in January, so you would have to have...
So January's really the date, it's not May or whatever.
No, no, it's not May, yeah. Yeah. So I think it's, I think it's, I think it's premature to put a placeholder at this juncture for air conditioning. If we steamroll things free when we have something for October, then that's great. But I think to put a placeholder right now where whatever number we would pull out of a hat, we don't even know. That's the problem. We don't really know what our options are and how much those options would cost.
And Ralph mentioned he was going to, he was in contact with somebody to get a quote. Would that not happen?
He was getting a quote for somebody to come in to give us a quote or help. Exactly. By the engineer to come in to look at the whole thing and say, this is really how much it would cost.
I think it'd be like a study, right?
Yeah.
It would really need to conduct a feasibility study.
Yeah, that's what that would be.
So we put that in the budget then for next year?
That's, we don't have, that's something we would do out of our...
Oh, wait, okay.
Yeah.
We could make sure that happened.
Oh, yeah. I mean, that though is in our, is control with what we do with some of our money. That could be a perfect thing to use a building fund for. So you know what I'm saying?
Well, we need to do that this year if we want to be ready for next October.
Exactly.
So it's not something that we can put in next year's budget to get a consult, to pay for a consult.
No, no, and that's where, again, we talked about these other funds, and we have, and we have major, and we have funds to do, I mean, a study is not going to be a huge amount of money.
And there was, so there was a study done in 2007, that things have changed since we took place, and we want to get to it, but the author of that study still works at the same time. And so he remembers what they did. So it might, one might be able to start it off on a more informed and exciting for, things have changed since then, obviously, but this conversation could...
So back to the capital, we should.
Right, so you know what, if, why don't we put a placeholder of like 38, just took the two items that we know we're going to have and then 20,000, that would give us an option if we did either one of those.
To move something else forward from previous year.
Yeah.
That would be a good idea.
So I'm going to do, why don't we say a placeholder of 40,000?
That all makes sense.
Okay. And that will be what I'll email Mr. Springett tomorrow, put a placeholder for a chikering capital budget, and then we will throw that in and have a final package for everyone October 27th.
And then these operating guides, these go in our operating budget?
That's in our operating budget.
So this, this will get discussed in December, we'll set the budget.
Right. Gotcha. And then this is a draft also, so Ralph and Hans will investigate some of these. Again, this is coming right from the report and we know from prior experience, and not everything in the report, it's a roadmap, not a definite to-do list. Some of these may come off once Ralph takes a look at it and says, you know, we really don't need to do that, or that's fine, and such. So that'll be a tweak number when he comes back.
Okay.
Okay, so that moves us on to technology, which in prior years, our technology purchases have also gone through capital. And if you remember our discussions from last year, one thing that we did get approved by Capitol was to bring our hardware cost into our operating budget. So we have, I'm going to say $15,000, I think that's the number, in our operating budget for this fiscal year to pay for things like the Cisco switches, a couple more of the projectors that we need to be done. So that left capital and came into operating. The next stage we were looking to do was to bring in replacement of some of the devices we have in the classroom, which now really are more like supplies into the operating budget. With the transition that we had at the end of the year, we didn't quite get that finalized. We rekindled those discussions and Mr. Springett and Mr. Lawrence, I think, had a meeting with, maybe the selectmen, but they're ready to sit down with Hans and myself to sort of put pen to paper. And I'm hoping that's where we end up. If that's the case, then as long as we don't have any new initiatives in the capital arena, most of our, most of our technology needs will roll into our operating budget. That's sort of what we're hoping for. We'll know more about that in October, but prior to October 27th, you would get a draft of whatever protocol that I think we'll come up with hopefully next week. So we have time to look at that because we'll have to approve that in October because by approving whatever that is, then we either send something to Capitol for technology or we don't. So that's the deciding.
Great.
Okay. But before we decide all that, we do have the draft of the technology supplement, which I'll turn over to Karen to sort of walk us through, because this lays the groundwork for what expenses we would incur.
That's correct. And this is a three-year book, last year, the current year, and then the 2016, 17 school year. And the purpose of the supplement is to outline how we will enhance the teaching and learning of students through the use of the technology and what's needed in order to be able to facilitate that. So you can see the goals that are written for this calendar year of 2015, 16, those are on page six. We have already begun to look at those, but the focus is on increasing educated capacity, which is why you see some of the faculty laptops, I've sat in on some of the staff meetings, some of the grade level meetings. Educators are there looking at real time at the data that students present, looking at real time at the curriculum that's being written. So the use of these devices plus the way that they will assess children using AMES web and things like that, it's directly facilitated by the reuse of the laptop. So by increasing the educated proficiency in that technology integration, we're looking at both goal one and goal two, is to identify student expectations for learning, look at professional development, say what are the learning products that students will exhibit K through five. And then what we did, and this was a collaboration between Mrs. Dial, Dr. Ryan, and Mr. Otako, myself, and Mr. Hart, who is the technology specialist here, as a conversation about how do we then move forward and take these, these goals to 2016, 2017. So we've modified them. It's more now we're in a sustaining pattern. As you can see, we're not adding any new devices, we're sustaining, we're sustaining, replacing and supporting those teachers who need laptops. And that's what you'll see in the budget pages. But this year, we're actually by August, October 30th, we'll create, administer, and analyze a survey for our educators at Chikering to determine what other specific professional development needs. I don't even know if you know Mr. Hart very well, but he does a tech Tuesday where that's professional development for teachers. He's doing professional development during the school day. He's doing the after-school classes. Let's see what it is right now, at this point in time, what our educators need, and let's tailor those sessions going forward. So that's where it will happen, and that professional development will happen. And we'll actually say out loud what a kindergarten for a second, third, fourth, and fifth grade, what technology projects. Because we've determined what a kindergarten should normally be able to do in basic operations or importing spreadsheets and importing pictures or making a brochure or graphics, we should be able to say, what is that product? And how do we know kids know it? And as they transition from grade to grade, we'll have a set of technology literacy skills these students will walk away with. So that's what's happening there. So by March of 2017, those learning products, we say, get grades K2 and 4, we'll see how far we can get the others. And then we need to look more at how do kids collaborate? How do they communicate? How do they use problem solving and critical thinking? We haven't spent much time looking at that, but it's something that's a part of the international standards and the Massachusetts standard. So we'd like to move forward. So to get at the meat of it, the budget appropriation appears on page 12. And you can see that the first line is desktop computers. And believe it or not, we still do need desktop computers because some of the software that's needed runs better on a desktop than it does on a laptop. So those are in the library and in some classrooms. I don't know if you've been in classrooms, watched kids doing books on tape at the computer or some of the advanced games for literacy or mathematics, they're using those desktop computers. So you can see as we get down and as the infrastructure switches, the interactive whiteboards, there's a controller in the bottom of the board that is failing, so Anthony will replace those with the, you know, interactive whiteboards. I confirmed with him today that it's not going to be the same as last year where projectors started to fail. The interactive whiteboards, he feels he only needs to replace these four. There's a laptop cart. And then to complete the laptop initiative for educators, there are 13 Lenovo laptops. So as we were looking at it, and this is up to your discussion, which is operating, which is capital. So we labeled what we thought it would be. And you can see 8,175 for the operating budget and 27,950 for the capital budget. Knowing that this whole tech plan supplement is a draft and certainly open to conversation, I know Mrs. Dial will be discussing it with her staff in the upcoming weeks and also bring in the technology team. So that's a quick overview of the tech plan supplement. And for those of you who've seen them before, this is first year with it, but certainly any questions I might answer.
And the other piece we have is the inventory that was updated for purchases that we made last year.
And also what each classroom has. Thank you for mentioning.
I will, if we go back to last year, I'll point out that we had a cart of Chromebooks that we had approved. And what happened to that cart? My understanding is that rather than it being a cart, it was distributed evenly among the fourth and fifth grade classrooms. But now each of the fourth and fifth grade classrooms have 10 Chromebooks.
That's correct.
Instead of the six that we had sort of piloted out. So that alleviated one of the carts that was, used to be in our inventory and went into the classrooms.
Well, we still need another cart.
We do, because, and I think as, as things progress, it may become, and right now we're saying yes, but it may become that that cart then is redistributed to classrooms right now. The feeling is, and you could probably speak to it better than I can, that the cart is used by educators across those grade levels and they may want every student to have one device. So that's why it's kept in the cart. Right now, if you're in a fourth grade, fifth grade classroom, you have to go to the classroom. Or can I borrow your Chromebooks today? So that's why we're still doing it. But as the technology evolves, you know, we're looking at the Chromebook as the right solution. Currently, it will be housed in a cart, but.
So is it only for the fourth and fifth graders, do you think?
No, no, it is not. But that was the example I gave.
Well, no, exactly. I mean, that makes a big difference in what the, how many need to be in the cart if it's just for fourth and fifth.
Every classroom throughout the entire school has a set of Chromebooks. And it was determined by educators that they do use it primarily for small group work. As Dr. Ladue was saying, if they want their entire class to have them for a special project, we have the cart that we can go to for supplemental devices. But they are, they are in every classroom.
And we're looking long-term, whether, yes, he goes with MCAS or PARC, whatever the choices in the future will be electronic. It will no longer be paper and pencil assessments. So if we look long-term and give the students more opportunities to access devices and for educators to infuse them in the technology, we're better off.
I think one, and I'll say this with all the committee here, one of the issues we have, we ran into last year with having this stuff on Capitol is that it was priced out for so many devices at a certain cost. You know, we do that, so we're doing this now for stuff that Mr. Otako doesn't buy until next summer. What happened is he got great prices on some of this stuff, but we were so limited in what we could do because it said we could buy this many. So it sort of, you know, had our, our wrists were handcuffed a little bit. So I think that's why we'd like a little more, if we have a little more flexibility, we think we could use the money that's given to us better if we could manage it within our own budget versus having to follow some of the more strict guidelines when it goes before town saying you can have, you know, 25 Chromebooks, I think it said like four, I forget what the number was, but he was able to buy across all three schools needs. And so he got a really good price. We could have turned that into a couple more Chromebooks to fulfill some of this, but we didn't go against what we had said we would. So that's where, on the laptops too, we have some money left in that article. We don't know if we turn back to the town or because it is still for laptops, if we use that to buy a couple of the other laptops that we're requesting. So that's some of the stuff that we need to talk about, I think, when we meet. Because it seems sort of silly that we just keep turning money back and asking for it, only because of the means in which it's happening.
Well, do you want me to speak to that?
Yeah, if you have some insight, would it be helpful for everyone to hear?
Hi, Dr. Lawrence, Chair of the Work Committee. And that's the whole purpose of the technology protocol that we're working on, is to try to move some of those items into the operating budget and out of the Article 5 capital budget so that you won't feel as tied up to a certain number of Chromebooks, for example, going forward. So we need to talk about it more.
Yeah, same page now, but that's a limit everyone to know that, sort of like. The reason why we're trying to do this is because it really makes it difficult.
So then the categorization of capital versus operating in this may change.
May change based on the protocol.
Based on what you're finding. So that's really just a description right now that that's subject to change?
It's a description on what we have currently in place, knowing that we're going to probably have something different in place, but we didn't want to make any assumptions.
I would think enrollment, you know, as we understand enrollment more too, that's going to be driver purchasing as well. I mean, I don't know, we only have a couple of years of potentially some upswings, and if that continues, we're going to have to start to think more about purchasing as well, right? And then if we see it trying to go in another direction, we go adjust it, but.
Right, right.
Can I just say thank you again for the inventory page? I know it's a relatively recent one, it's hugely helpful and very reassuring, so I'm sure it's a pain in the something to do, but thank you.
Send it to Mr. Otako.
It really is.
So I think, well, I think, Lauren, you are a technology.
So I'm going to be meeting with the technology committee for Chikering and so that I will be more informed for the next meeting and hopefully able to answer some questions that might come up as we try to, as we approve the plan and the capital request.
Perfect. And I, and I think Karen and Anthony and whoever else, we're on steamrolling this route that we had a draft for tonight, although it gives us an opportunity to have it for a month, get some updates, and then move it to bed in October, which is.
Thank you very much.
And if you think of any questions later, then just feel free to forward it and we'll forward it on to Lauren. Okay. Now for the fun. Yes. So, Karen, I'm going to turn it back over to you and our temperature report.
What about the fact?
Not easing them into this process.
Just as an update, and obviously you know that the six new, larger, better, more improved ceiling fans, thank you, Adrian and Don for that, installing those in those six classrooms. Again, we have to get some feedback as to how, what they are doing and how they're affecting comfort levels in those rooms. I spent my time familiarizing myself with the EMS system and what we can and cannot do in terms of what kind of data can we get? What can we do with it? You know, can we graph it? I was told the last time that they went through this process, they were literally carrying reams of, you know, paper with hourly readings into school committee, you know, meetings, which doesn't make any sense. So when we figured out the graphic capability, we're kind of excited about that, although the question is, what do we want to graph? How do we want to graph it? What do we want to do? How do we want to present it? The good news is it does keep a full year's worth of hourly data in every classroom in the building.
But we lost last, I mean, did we lose last year?
Yeah, after, well.
After a year ago.
My plan is, yeah, exactly. My plan is to take the year, spin that off and store it somewhere and then let it, let it override itself. So we'll keep storing the information now, you know, now that we know that we want to get that and then people are going to be looking at it and we're going to be using it or needing it, that we don't lose any data. You know, the one that concerns me is that we keep tripping offline, the system itself keeps tripping offline. Why is that happening? That's why we have the vendor in here saying, why is it happening? I want real data, I don't want it. When it trips offline, it does an estimate, so it sort of skews your data in those situations.
Did you notice a lot of those were on weekends?
They were all on the weekends, yes. And so he said, you know, this kind of, he told me about the power quality in Dover, and I said, well, that would mean every weekend. Every weekend, exactly. I'm like, this can't go out every weekend. So there's some issues there. And again, the platform that it's sitting on is a very, very old, I mean, literally a very extremely old computer that was never upgraded. So we got to take a peek at that too, because it does much more than just log this, it actually controls your entire HVAC system in this building and to take advantage of that, so.
Can I just ask, the data for temperatures that we have?
Yep.
That you have access to, goes back to when?
I have it all the way back to May of last year.
Okay, so that's intact data we have that we?
I spun that off in an Excel file, yes.
Okay, thank you.
How about a year ago today? Would we have last September, October?
Yes.
So can we just, can we go ahead and archive that so we don't lose that as we?
It's already there.
That's what you archived, last year?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, my question is, is that air temperature or is that measuring humidity?
I think straight, right now, straight air temperature.
Okay. So is there any way that we can measure the true temperature in those rooms rather than just the air temperature?
We don't know.
Because it's a big difference.
I'd like to find out.
Actually, I think that from a humidity standpoint, because it's such a closed.
System.
System. I don't think that the humidity inside gets as bad as it is outside, because it's not one of the problems.
Maybe not as bad, but I know being in those rooms during those days, it is extremely humid. So that could increase the temperature by five, 10 degrees potentially. And if we're not measuring that.
Right, so I think that's where they're looking in to see what more the system can do. Because the system knows at night when it does its air exchange, it can measure humidity and such, so it has.
It knows when it's humid outside, so it won't let, it won't bring that air in to make it worse inside. It'll just sort of sustain what it has already and then wait for the humidity to drop at night and then refresh as it comes in. It's actually interesting when you plot the data, you can see it, you know, something up during the day and then again going down at night for the beginning of the day, temperatures coming up and then coming down is really kind of neat, sign wave if you will.
Can you, I can get this offline, but I wondered which six classes, do anyone know that off the top of their head?
Yes. The 2000 series, 2092, 2089, 2088, 2085, 2084, and 201.
Fourth grade classrooms.
So I thought the map would be.
Facing the playground, not facing the.
Correct, second floor.
So one, two, three, four, five, six, okay, thank you.
And I think the other key thing that, so, you know, Hans played around with a few reports and I think sent some of them out to you just so you could sort of see.
Yeah, I wanted to, you know, show you what we could and couldn't do, what we've discovered to date so far. And then again, you know, the idea being that could we take sample class? I was interested in looking at the other side of the building from the really, you know, take a peek at some of these other rooms and see what the ambient air temperature was in there, so.
And there was a big fluctuation.
It was, yeah, well, it was and it wasn't. I mean, it's interesting that the information that you did, how many years ago, it's something you.
2017.
Yeah, your predecessors, you know, it really is within that five degree band. Fascinating.
And I think that's where you have to tweak the reports even more though, because if you take highest temperature, I just looked at a couple of sample days and the temperature and the temperature from three o'clock on continues to creep back. So you have to pull the, end of school day. Pull the highest temperature, it's typically not in the school day. So we're playing with some of this data.
That's a great.
So I think one of the things, as they had a task force way back when, I think there's a lot of data to be looked at, updated, manipulated, and we need to alleviate some of that work off Central Office. So I think anyone interested in working on like a task force to be given some work to be done would be very helpful to speed along the process. So if you're interested, let me know, and I know you all have certain skills.
We don't have HVAC skills, can we still?
Yeah. Because I think if we have more people looking at some of this data, obviously under the guidance of the Central Office, we can be set of hands to sort of help understand it. I know everyone's been getting emails from parents and have some anecdotal data to add to this. We have great reports back from the 2007, 2008 task force, which we can now update, because technology's changed and such. That was one of our other ideas when we, the subcommittee met, was to engage a consultant to come in and relook at everything for us, because none of us are, you know, we're not experts. We don't know what the latest technology is in the air conditioning world. So we might want to, as I said, formulate a plan to bring back here in October as to what we do with that also. So I think I look at the next month as sort of really being a workhorse. Take all this information that has resurfaced and new information that we've gathered and pull it all together so that we have something to talk about, that we actually have some data around.
Can I also throw on the table that it could be that we look at the windows? Could be windows and not units.
Well, and that's one of the recommendations in the report from 2007, and the windows that we have are not conducive to any kind of air into. And it's also, they mentioned, it was funny, that's a psychological, you know, difference. If you know you can get like some outside air, it makes you feel different. So I thought it was interesting they had that in the report. So I will, Adrian had them all at his fingertips, the reports. So I'll email them off to you guys, just so you can read them. I think you might have already read them, because you knew all the task each. So just so you can get familiar with where that group left things in two thousand eight.
Could I also get put on the table that I think we might want to consider as a school committee, establishing a policy that would set the parameters below which and above which you would not conduct classroom exercises, temperatures below which and above which you would not be able to have classroom exercises. I think the city of Boston, that was something that was raised, I read it in the Boston Globe in the last month, because they're going through the same issues with the heat spells that we had that are later in the season than we typically have had. But it could, it could drive the issue is if we had a policy, and if it gets, you know, there's flags of measurement, then you have to go to the cafeteria, and no one's going to like that either. So it just, you know, I think it, it's something to discuss.
To, okay.
And I don't know whether that's policy subcommittee or whether that's school committee driven.
I think it's, it's fascinating to talk about that, because we would, as well as, as well as all of the, we spend an awful lot of time valuing and expressing how much we value our teachers, and what we're trying to stop they do, and how, the effort that goes into educating children. But if the teachers are trying to work and the children are trying to learn, occasionally in a two-hundred environment, and if the data says that that's sufficiently frequent enough. I was reminded that a middle school presentation to town meeting, I think, was that one in five days were over 78 degrees. And that was the statistic that I remember on the slide from that presentation. I think, I think if we can look at this together, and it seems that a lot of the data is there. We have the data, it seems to be analyzed. From talking to people who were on that task force back in '07 and '08, it didn't get very far, partly I think because there were other things going on in the region at the time. I wasn't involved, but from, there was a lot going on at the time. And I think from reading between lines, it was seen as a slightly annoying satellite group of school committee people. And there wasn't much liaison between the task force and Central Office. And I think the task force is great, I just want us to, whoever works on it to bind themselves as close as possible to Central Office to make sure that they're on the same page.
And it wasn't really, if I remember, I don't think anyone in that task force was on school committee. It was all outside of school committee.
So even more satellite, I think.
Yeah, yeah.
So I just, I just, I would hate an effort to be done that wouldn't be, wouldn't be seen to be.
Right, so that's one step we've made right there, is that it's coming, you know, from school committee.
In housing.
Because that was actually a separate task force that was working with Central Office, that school committee really didn't have its fingers in it. In fact, it reported up through school advisory, because I was co-chair of school advisory at the time. So that's why I know exactly how it, and it just never got legs at the school committee level.
Is that middle school presentation available somewhere, somebody else can see what it was they sent in?
Ask the town clerk to direct you to the part of the website. On town W, is that?
The, all the presentations that are at town meeting are listed by town meeting, and it's in the site for 2013, I believe?
Okay.
You just have to scroll down, they're all on there, it's in there, yeah. Okay, so let me know if you're interested in taking on some of this, you know, data analysis and follow-up. And we will coordinate everything through Central Office and bring back a proposal and some better data at our October meeting to see where we go from there.
Would we do the feasibility study in conjunction with looking at the data? Or is that prepared for the course?
Yeah, I think what I would envision is that we probably, we'll come together in October if we think we need to do a feasibility study, that's when we kick that off, yeah.
Can I ask two things? There's been an awful lot of work done for this, and thank you very much. There was some discussion of possibly being able to have school nurse data.
Oh, yeah.
If there were any on how often, because we all wear anticoast stuff that, you know, the son of the neighbor down the road grew up twice because of heat, but I don't know if that's the first time in four years it's ever happened. And I'd love to see some data from the school nurse on that.
I think we can, I think if we can include that in the data that comes back next meeting, will give us a chance to put that together in a, in a manner that is confidential. And.
Just numbers.
And, yeah.
And then the other thing I just wanted to, and I think it's just appropriate to ask the staff, Dr. Ryan, and any of the other teachers here, if they want to share any comments on the asset. The data is usually important, but people work in this building. I just, if you would want to speak to that, how it feels and how you hear, how it feels, it'd be great.
I appreciate that, and I very much appreciate the investment in the fans on the upper level. That was important for us to do in order to see how much difference we can make. We did a small study, controlled study, the week before school started in terms of playing with the window openings, doors closed, doors open, to try to get a little more information. And, you know, certainly we have teachers here many, many hours, even beyond the school day. So when those temperatures really peak late in the day, this building is still abuzz with a lot of activity. I did ask some folks to kind of collect anecdotes from people in the building about, you know, what the experience has been like. So if I may, turn it over to.
Yes, that's, you're right. Question, I get some corporate, so I'm actually 2088.
Right now.
Yes, so, I'm sorry.
You're on the equator.
I'm on the equator. I wear sunscreen every day. So in asking and talking to both the four, five wing, the two, three wing, and the one, two wing, or the K1 wing, or pre-K K1 wing, I would say with the fans, especially on the side where you guys put them in, the good news is it creates less of a, an issue with the movement of air. So the papers aren't flying off as much as they are in the other classrooms. So the older fans are much louder, so they aren't being used, because the kids can't hear instruction, or the teacher can't hear whether the children are receiving the instruction, and the papers are going everywhere. The ones that have been installed, much quieter, and because I think the diameter is so much bigger, the disturbance isn't a big deal. The downside is, is there's no noticeable difference. It's, when it's 90 degrees in my room, which it was on September 10th, it's still 90 degrees. It's still hot air being pushed down on hot little bodies that come out from recess or come in from recess. So then additionally, we've been using other fans to try to also supplement. Unfortunately, those are loud, they do throw the papers around, so we turn those off. So it's like, it's a catch-22 in terms of how much do we use the fans and how much do we just deal with the noise. I think, inadulterately, it hits that 79, 80 degree mark, that's when you notice the difference. You can't breathe, the kids can't breathe, their heads go on their desk. They're coming from gym where it's 90 degrees in the gym, or 85, or whatever the temperature is, and then coming back up to the classroom and there's no relief. And so the heads are on their desk, and by noon, the day is gone. And so you think about time on learning, and it's a couple days here and a couple days there, but it all starts to add up, that there's so much that's, I feel like, being lost, even in terms of, I need more water. Of course you do. Your health and safety is my number one concern above anything else. Go get a drink. Now I need to go to the bathroom. Of course you do. You know, it's so hot in here, we can't breathe. Let's go to another room. Everybody pick up all your stuff, 20 minutes of transition time is lost. So it's the little stuff that starts to add up in terms of the impact of working in a room that that, it's that hot. We'd also, in terms of talking about like moving kids into the cafeteria, we did in the assembly the first week, the first full week of school, I was shocked that nobody fainted. I mean, it was, because there's no air movement in there either. There's no air movement in the art room or in the student learning center. You just don't think about it until you have a child who's in there and then coming back to your room. So they go to art, they come back, and it's, I just feel like the day sometimes feels lost, because even though it might be 60 degrees out tonight, I'll still come into a 74, 75 degree room. It doesn't cool down at night, and I, I know there's talk of circulation of air. It's, we don't feel it. And I have, like, my room is the one of the ones that, the windows were open, the fans were on. My fan's been on a very long time now, it hasn't shut off. And it's working beautifully, and I do think that that has made an impact, a positive impact, but not enough. Not enough for kids to feel comfortable and engaged in learning, and not enough for me not to go home feeling sick. And that's a problem. And you don't envision it going away until we do something. And I think that there's, there's a lot of desire and want to participate, to do whatever you guys might need in terms of data, or in terms of looking at options, or, not to overstep, but willingness to help, I guess, from the staff.
No, and the feedback like this is stuff that you would add in the report.
Sure. Okay. Yeah, if you need something written up, or if you need it more formalized, we can try to talk about and figure out what would be helpful.
Maybe that we develop a small survey that goes to all the teachers, talks, you know, to gather a couple of data points that we feel. So that's the kind of stuff that we, we've never fully documented enough to be able to move forward
Right.
with doing this. So this is what we're trying to do now.
Which is great. One question I would have even for that, for that survey is, we have all this great data. I don't know where the sensors are in the room. Not that that's necessarily a make it or break it for me, but I have a little digital Amazon $17 on my desk. Looks beautiful, but I don't know where the temperature is being taken in the room itself. And how does that impact, you know, is it near the fan? Is it high, is it low? Is it right where the kids are in terms of the level of what they're, the air they're breathing in? So just something.
I believe it's the thermostat itself, but we have called them, the company, to find out if it's there or if it's actually up in the fan, so we'll look it up.
Mrs. Aggison, is this year particularly worse or, than, you've been here seven, eight years?
Yeah, ten.
Ten.
I think it's a hit or miss, and that's what's so hard, right? So we'll have years where, like last year's June was, we got away, really, you know, it was nice. Even with all the snow days, and as going a little later, it still was a pretty even keel spring. This September's been unbearable. So it's hard to say. I think this year, the beginning of this year, has been harder than other years, but we've had June, or we've had, there was, I think it was two or three years ago, May. We had four days in May where it was in the 90s. And it's like, once that air gets in that classroom, I have a hard time getting it out. I don't know how to get rid of the hot air in my room. It gets, excuse me, trapped in the ceiling, and the windows don't open. I mean, they open, but during the day. Right, during the day, I'm either opening the top or I'm pulling shades. It's one or the other, I don't, I can't do both because of the design. So it just depends.
What's a comfortable temperature in your room?
Wow, I'm running out of spot. Um, okay. I would say today it was, at one point, about 74, and it was pretty comfortable. I mean, you get 20 little kids in there, it fluctuates, because if they come in for recess and they're hot and sweaty, that brings it up a little bit. But around 74 is pretty comfortable.
Okay.
But I'm telling, I've kind of noted, once we hit 80, I can feel it. Like, I can feel it's a little bit harder to breathe. It's a little bit harder to motivate or to be motivated.
So if you had to put a line on a graph, you'd say 80 is the point above which you've lost. You lose your students.
You lose your students. Now that is me, and speaking with a few, a few teachers, but if I had to pick.
It's 80, not 78, not.
Well, it's hard to say.
That's a pretty good number.
I mean, it depends, yeah, it depends on the humidity. Because though it's, it's humid outside, it's humid in, because once the air gets in, I can't get rid of it. I don't know what to do to get rid of the air. The door's been open, the fan's been on, the windows have been open.
If you look online at some of the other schools, other schools that you consider heat, heat day policies, it's 78, 82 is when it gets of concern.
And so if it's 78 and humid, it might be harder that day than if it was 81, but not as humid. Right, so it's back to that question of what's the real temperature, what's the field temperature versus just the data of the temperature.
I just, I, thank you. I just feel that, I'm sort of stating a little bit of the opposite. I really feel it's incumbent on us to have a proper scrub and look at this. I don't want to talk ill of the dead, but, you know, previous superintendent was emailing, found that saying, we're looking at this, we're going to analyze it, we're going to do something about it, and we're going to, and that was 12 months ago, and it hasn't been done. So I, and I thought, and I, I'm happy to help on this, with the data. I just, I really feel that we're not doing our job to town, kids, parents, teachers, administration, unless we have a proper scrub of this.
I agree.
That's what, that's what we shall do. So, and the other great thing is that we have both Bill and Hans, who've been in other districts for heat issues, so they bring to the table, you know, perspectives that we can add to our perspectives. And so actually, it's a nice, a nice compliment. So we will be back to everyone in October, but in the interim, we'll have everyone off doing some work to keep this moving as quickly as possible.
Okay.
Okay, so the next item on the agenda is, is our opportunity to just take a little bit and look into the future and see what presentation topics might be of interest. Last year, we had a little pre-meeting before our September meeting, and talked about this, so tonight, unfortunately, we're jamming it in tonight. So I apologize for that, but that's just how the timing works. We have our calendar that has our routine business on it that I can send out to everyone, but this is really to capture those topics that would normally come up in that normal course, the business necessarily. Last year, we had some great presentations, I think, zones of regulations was a great presentation. We talked about, we had the joint meeting about plus last year with Sherburne. So it's those type of things that is an opportunity now, if you haven't had time to think about it overnight, feel free to email me, but this is an opportunity to sort of throw some things out there. And Lauren, Deb, please feel free to add things that you would like to share with us. We definitely have a whole lot of meetings, obviously, but we like to make them, you know, worthwhile, knowing that really, I think October's going to be fairly full with what we have. In December, we really just talk about the budget. So we're really looking at January, March, and May.
Dawn, how long ago did you have that walkthrough at school, when we started in little pairs and?
The day at school.
Yeah.
That was two years ago.
Two years ago.
Yeah.
I know, I know it was a lot of work, I know that, which.
It was also very enjoyable for us.
It was super cool.
And I think informative, yeah.
Did anyone have to be disappointed?
I wasn't there. I've had some disappointed experiences in this school before. I've had some disciplinatizations in this school before, so...
I think it was Tim, when he had to be discredited, Tim was still on the committee. But it was, I remember, it was the first year that FLESS was in kindergarten, and it was so worthwhile to go sit in that section, because I think it, it all seemed worthwhile, all the work, because that was like, that was my favorite part of the day. Yeah, but, so yeah, that was something that we did. For Brooke and Henry, we did a half-day, and we all split up and went into different classrooms, and saw some things that administration wanted to share with us. We saw technology in action, which was really great for us to see, because we had just implemented some of the pilot programs. And then to see the FLESS, and then some small group worked, and I think some of the groups wanted to kind of strategically center, spend some time in there. And then we had lunch. We got lunch in the cafeteria, to see how that was all about, and had a little recap with Laura and the team back in the conference room. So that's sort of how that half-day played out.
It's a great idea.
Yeah, yeah, we've done it a couple, a couple times, I think that was my second or third time, so, so that's something that we could think about, and how the timing...
Then we're due to do it again.
Okay. One item that I was thinking about, we have had, over, say, the last 10 years, a lot of changes to our curriculum, and a lot of new initiatives. It would be great just to put on a piece of paper, where we are with everything, because I think one of the charges of school committee sometime is to make sure we are doing curriculum reviews, and we've been doing so much new stuff that we haven't gotten to that point. But like, everyday math now, I remember sitting in the audience whenever day math was approved and rolled out. So now, that's been probably eight to 10 years. So I think it'd be great for us, just on one little piece of paper, just to put the ELA, the math, the social studies, now we have science with the new generation, just to give us an overview. So I thought that was one thing we could particular, you know, we can throw on, where are we, where are we after all these years? So that's my...
That'd be great.
Thought? You always have good ones.
No, mine's not that. Mine is broad. Oh, mine is very picky. I looked last year, and in, at this time last year, in September, one of the agenda items was just doing a recap of the educator evaluation ratings, and at that time, it was required to be reported to the state. But I don't know that that is, if it's still a requirement, whether the deadline has changed, because I didn't refine it.
When will they be published? Probably November. When does it become public? We'll have to look that up.
I'll have to check that.
Yeah, we'll look at that.
So I just, I didn't know if that was something that would be of interest, it's just kind of an overall profile, because last year, we would have looked at the first half of the population, and then last year, the second half was reviewed. And then I had just a topic that I just don't want to see fall off the table, not necessarily, it's not necessarily related to, specifically to chickering, but that Edvocate report had some actionable items on it, and at some point, whether it's a joint meeting or a chickering meeting, especially around the financial controls, and with Hans being here, it'd be great if we maybe could get an update on what he saw as a doable, actionable item, you know, and not necessarily waiting for the new superintendent to lay that out as a goal. So those are my two.
Yeah, and I think that's a good joint meeting topic, along with, I think Brooke had mentioned some work that she was doing with Challenge Success, and working with Pine Hill, which I think that is one of the main focus goals of the district this year, so I think that's a great thing to throw into a joint, so that...
It can share information.
Yeah, I think when we did that in June, I believe it was, and we had all the administrators there, and talked about Challenge Success, I think that was really worthwhile for all of us to hear the same information, because we usually just hear it in bits and pieces. So something like that, I'd rather see at a joint, so that we can all share, than just limit it to chickering. So I'll capture that one for a joint one.
I think the educator eval one is also a joint topic, that's something relevant to all four buildings.
Right.
So that doesn't need to be a specific chickering agenda.
The one thing we haven't talked about in a while, and I don't want to date myself, but I was on one of the task force a long time ago, our report card, and where that sort of stands. Because it's been a while since we've had that discussion, and I feel Mrs. Baker left, I remember sitting in a focus group with, with our, when we were redoing the report card back, I don't even know how many years ago now. So I don't know where that stands, and if it's worthwhile, just maybe at one of the meetings, giving us an update on what the report cards do look like, at various grade levels.
Sorry, and I had heard of from some Pine Hill parents, that they were changing their report card, and their, the relationship between the report card and the parent conference this year, so I can't say I know much more about it than that, but I don't know if that's something we wanted to look at, once we know their reasoning.
In terms of conferences, they adopted the schedule, you mentioned.
They had a change of schedule last year, right?
So they're destroying behind us. Pretty gnarly.
Gentlemen, we think on your list?
I've made my suggestion. I always like hearing how the Spanish is being rolled out, grade by grade by grade, and how the school is embracing the greater number of children who get to do Spanish, and I think that's, when it was just a little cameo in one grade, it was probably very manageable, and it could be run very discreetly and very, very well. It's when you scale it to, you know, the whole school, in a couple years' time, then it becomes a different beast, and harder to, harder to control, and harder, and you have probably different challenges. So I'm always intrigued by how that is going, I think it's, we're very proud of this school, but it becomes a different beast to run, so I'm always keen to hear about that.
And any topics that you guys have that you would like to share that we haven't brought forward?
There's so many. This is, I think this touches on a lot of interesting points, so we'll talk some more about...
So you can weave in things that you have, based on some of these topics.
Okay, that'd be great.
Thank you.
And so I think what works well is if you want to take the stuff back, and work it into your schedule, what works better. Monta, just let us know.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
And then you take the lead on when, where.
Will you send us a copy of your schedule, your calendar, that you're gonna send out, to what you're expecting each month?
Yes, yeah, I'll do that, I have that at home. Okay. And if you think of anything else, just send me. So moving right along, superintendent search, we put this on here just so that we, as a, our own committee, could just see if there are any questions. You have the calendar, we're moving along, they've had two of the focus groups, was today? Yeah, did anyone go to today's?
It was tonight, wasn't it? It was today?
No, they were today, tonight, the night one is next week.
Okay.
Today was the elementary teachers? Anyone go?
Low attendance, I think.
Low attendance, okay.
But always know, and hopefully you guys will encourage the teachers to fill out the survey, because all that information will be captured, and that's what's coming to us on October 20th, the candidate profile, that we will be, school committee members will then give our input, to collaborate with the input from all the other groups, so that NSDAQ will go back and write a candidate profile for us. So that's what all this work is leading up to, is the October 20th date, and then it'll be fast-moving after that.
Okay.
Okay. The consent agenda, we have a set of minutes, approval of nature's classroom field trip, and some technology items to be written off. Does anyone have any questions, comments, edits on any of those items?
I just have a question on the field trip. So the new science standards, those, those are still aligning with what's happening in nature's classroom?
Yes.
Nature's classroom number was not updated for the next generation science standards? Because we don't, anything is yet?
Okay. Anything else? Do I have a motion?
I'll just, the minutes, you keep saying I wasn't present for the first 55 minutes, which is unfortunately true.
Right, okay, I was gonna say, you were...
They're just reading, it's like, oh, God.
Not yet present.
What's interesting, or...
Because Amy watches you walk in.
Yeah, late, late, late still, late.
I think we're almost over when you said it came in last. So I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll move.
Suck it?
Suck it.
All in favor? Great. Also in your packet, you have the region and the sherbers approve school committee, school committee minutes, for your reading pleasure. And you also have in here, I think we had, yeah, there's a memo from Bill that has the October agenda items that are already scheduled to be on the agenda. If you think of anything else, then feel free to send that along. One note that I, I'm gonna step backwards for just a second, I forgot to say about the technology supplement plan. With all the new devices, it would be great if we saw the new replacement policy, but what are we envisioning, the replacement on the new devices, could be how many years?
Oh, sure.
So that we can start thinking about, there's sort of been a pattern now, when we brought it all in, when are we gonna have to start replacing it? That would be really helpful for budget planning purposes.
Did he have that?
Okay, perfect.
I thought the schedule, the inventory is so helpful to have, I wondered if it's possible to add that year of acquisition, and so that, and then you could even then go project forward the replacement years.
Yeah.
In terms of numbers, it would be so much easier to follow. My head, okay, yeah, those are the 25, and I see those are gonna be replaced in 2009 or 2019, and whatnot. Great for mine.
Okay, any other business this evening? May I have a motion to adjourn?
Sure.
Suck it? All in favor? Think you are? I wasn't too bad.
Did we hate the other school?
It's not bad.
The other school?